Call this meeting to order. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
Graziano.
Here.
Dotari.
Here.
Robel.
Here.
Strumlow-Burk.
President.
Mayor Mellon.
Here. So I'm trying.
Stu, under the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice that this meeting is published in the December 18th issue of the Star Ledger and in the December 20th issue of the Bellev Times. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Bellev Town Hall Golden Board and a copy is on file in municipal clerk's offices.
Ledger, ladies and gentlemen.
I declare my allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving ahead, our next item is executive session. Do you have any items for executive session? Seeing none? Okay. We're going to move forward to pool of minutes.
None at this time, Mayor.
We have no pool of minutes. Next, we usually have report of the manager. Considering a change in the agenda, we do the mayor's report first. But I'm still considering that, so for time being, we'll have report of the manager.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to go first.
Just I'm going to ask you to please speak either.
I'm going to speak live because I.
Or speak into the microphone.
So first, let me start off by wishing everyone a very happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Obviously, it's a great time of year. It's fun with the family. They'll certainly enjoy the holiday. Our attorney, as you can see, is missing. Steve's having a procedure done on his ankle. I spoke to him today. He's doing great. We anticipate that he will be with us at the next meeting. He'll probably have a little scooter with him again. But Steve, if you're watching, a little shout out to Steve Martino.
I'm not sure he's watching that.
All right. So I'm sure I'll watch it tomorrow when the painkillers wear off. Just a couple of housekeeping items. For the month of December, we offer free parking on the avenue and in our lots where the shop is. And also, as of Monday, December 2nd, the alternate street parking will be suspended for street sweeping until early spring. So our sweeper obviously can't go out with the weather and cold temperatures. At the last meeting, we, the mayor, asked to do a resolution which was labeled the Washington Avenue Maintenance Policy. And as much as the policy is not ready to present to the council in a written form, I will say that we started taking measures as you, as I reported at the last meeting or two meetings ago, it's actually probably been about four weeks now, we have a Saturday crew. And the Saturday crew, I can't tell you just the amount of compliments and the improvements that we see already. This weekend is a perfect example. Obviously, our employees are off Thursday and Friday this weekend. So without having a Saturday crew, Washington Avenue would have no, no attention paid to it Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, so for four days. So you can imagine the heavy traffic that we have on Washington Avenue and obviously the Old Way, obviously the four days and the amount of traffic and garbage filled up. So we'll actually have a crew on Saturday, so we'll only go two days. And then again, we'll be back on Monday. And one of the other parts of the improvement is, we actually have one of our public works guys go out with the garbage holders on Friday afternoon. One of the last things they do on Friday afternoon is Washington Avenue. They were doing it closer to the earlier hours and we, it's part of the policy that the mayor requested. The mayor also requested that the, that we have the ability to borrow some money for the water filters. I know the mayor's going to probably speak a little bit about the water filters today. Our bond counsel, Jesse, I'm sorry, Matt Chessop.
That, let me just correct you. I think you made, misspelled. It wasn't for the water filters, it was for the lead line replacement.
Lead line replacement, thank you. So Matt and Chessop from McManam in Scotland, our bond counsel, will be at the next meeting. We were trying to get them here to this meeting, but with Thanksgiving holiday, it was a little tight. So that was the second item I think the mayor asked me to report on. If anybody was anywhere near the building today, we had a very, very important drill. And I know Councilman Naomi, Councilman Cosarelli, and the mayor, all will probably say a little bit about it. But I just wanted to give you my perspective, because this is an exercise that we actually started about six months ago. There were different phases. We actually had to introduce a policy that we've never had before to the employees. And again, we live in a different society, a different type of, a different world than we did years ago, where we didn't have to actually plan for something like this. So it started with a written policy. I can't thank the chief of police, the fire department, and Captain Brennan. They did such an amazing job on creating the policy. It was very detailed. And we gave it to the employees and all the employees had to sit in on a one-hour, one-hour in-service. And then it was a buildup. One of the last steps in the process was to actually provide for an exercise that, in the building, there were actually gunshots today. And while we were doing this, it, it all, you know, it all seemed important and it all seemed, you know, it seemed like it was something that we had to do. But until you actually heard those shots go off in the building, it was a different type of feeling. And I was extremely proud of how the employees reacted. We clearly, you know, this, this exercise was graded actually and observed by the state police and the county police. So they're actually going to have some more dialogue with our police department and our fire department, going over all the things that worked, some of the things that didn't work, some of the things that we can improve. But it was, it was a pretty, a very, pretty sincere and somewhat emotional exercise. And at the end of the day, or at the end of the exercise, we all got together and we spoke about it. But again, it's just Bellev clearly is in the forefront on this. I spoke to, represented this from our JIF. And I actually spoke to a town manager from South Jersey who already heard about it. And he's asking for us to send down our policy so they could take a look at it. So again, Bellev clearly is on the forefront of this, something that we should all be proud of, and proud of, and I know the council, proud of the police department and the fire department. Again, have a great, great holiday.
Thank you.
Okay, just, just real quick on that note. I just got a text from my friend in New Brunswick, so it's all.
We did get media coverage.
Yeah, great coverage. I mean, and you have like, you're talking about an after, like an after-action report, lessons learned, that kind of stuff. Because this is, this is, the first one we did, we did at the high school, if you remember that. Tommy, if you remember. But this is the first time we've ever done one in a town. And it's, and I haven't seen a lot of these done within, within a town structure rather than a school structure.
We believe we're the first municipality actually doing it.
Yeah, within the town hall.
And if I may, I'd like to also, Steve, you look at the fire side, right? So in my job, we do this type, and then we also do a fire drill to where exits, what to do, how to do, when to do. And it's something to also implement.
Well, this is one of the things we were talking about, to do like a cybersecurity drill, disaster recovery drill, this whole ransomware thing that we've been going through.
It hit Livingston.
Yeah.
Yes.
Really.
We've actually failed those tests, by the way.
Yeah, well, but, but the good news is, we at the JIF have started doing this training about three years ago, the fishing and all the other stuff. You know, we need to step it up a little bit. Because there's, there's actually people out there that have, that are selling toolkits to people to do ransomware. I mean, that's what's going on out there. You know, you can buy theoretically, you can buy a toolkit.
So as far as the mayor's report goes, I know we heard a lot from the manager about the active shooter drill. Obviously, myself, deputy mayor, councilman DePena, we're here for that. I was also part of the preliminary meetings and staff training. And as the manager said, you sit in the meetings and you're prepped and it's, I kind of didn't know what to expect today, until those gunshots rang out and you're watching the response and your seconds, it seemed like minutes. And, you know, we weren't just playing cops and robbers. It was our goal. We've had many conversations since this morning about lessons that we already learned. And we're going to be publicizing those and making some changes. But there was a fire alarm pull, it didn't work. So now we know that we're going to test regularly. These sounds like basic things, but, you know, it's not always so basic when you're in the middle of it. And we also have representatives from our school district here, which is great. You know, the one thing that really struck me is that the first responding officers that I saw peeking around a wall, and not like TV, I mean, no body armor, just with a sidearm. And it wasn't until a few minutes after that, that either SWAT or ERT responded with the heavy armor and with the artillery. That's already minutes later. And those first guys, they were both men, the first, first of them that came through, they were going up those stairs. And that was, it was very touching to see. And I, Anthony commended them. Our employees did a fantastic job. They've been trained on how to respond. And we did throw curveball in because there was a script. We knew what was going to happen. They didn't know what time. But part of that script was X, Y, and Z was going to happen. The pulling of a fire alarm, albeit the second fire alarm that actually went off, was not part of that script. And you're trained when a fire alarm goes off that you exit. But our employees were trained during an active shooter, you shelter in place. And we wanted to see what they were going to do when that fire alarm went off. That fire alarm went off and they stayed in place. So that was, that was impressive to see that. I think our police did a phenomenal job. Fire coming in at the end of that thing, bringing out the wounded, it was excellent. We already know that we're going to write some after-action reports to see how that works. And again, I was very proud of everybody today. They did a great job. Anthony touched on it. I think he intended to touch on it, but we do, we are going to have a filter update within a week or so. We have secured some funding. It has not cost the township anything. We're just waiting on the exact dollar amount. We believe that first round of funding will give us enough money to purchase filters for what we're calling the most vulnerable. We've been urging residents, and I'll get back on that tomorrow, to register themselves, register their households. Let us know if you're senior, if you're sick, if you're infirm, if you have children under the age of six, if you're pregnant or nursing. That's the priority that we're going to use. Once we have that, we'll separate out Silver Lake, because as the councilwoman knows, they've already been receiving filters from NORC. Once we get that list, we believe that we will have enough funding to purchase the first round of filters. Not going to cost the township anything. I'm not going to announce the dollar amount right now because we haven't gotten the letter yet. It's still a pretty wide range. But we believe that as of this week, we could probably place, if it comes tomorrow, an order and have filters in a week or so. And we'll be distributing filters in the next two weeks, which is great. Very happy about that. Anthony mentioned a Saturday DPW crew. The one thing that he failed to mention is that it's not costing us anything. So I figured that that question might be out there, but because Anthony, being the experienced town manager that he is, had the ability to sit down with DPW administration, sit down with the union, and work it out whereby we have a Saturday crew, it's not costing us any more money. Traditionally, that rose costs us more money. So Anthony, you never get enough thanks for the cost savings that you're giving us, but here we get a benefit and it's a cost neutral. So, so I commend you for that. I did receive a text message during our active shooter drill. Those of you that are concerned, the governor is still speaking with me. And I did get a text message during the drill announcing an award of, I think it's $722,000 for Bellev for DOT road program. That's annual, we get that every year, but he just gave us what the update was for this year. It's comparable to prior years, but the funding is never guaranteed. So I'll take it, $722,000. That's traditional. We get batteries pots of money for roads, whether it's CDPG, whether it's our own money, whether it's state, whether it's DOT, whether it's fed, so that came through. What nobody knows is that, or a few people would know, is that in this budget process down in Trenton this year, our legislative team, L-29, petitioned on Bellev's behalf for an extra $150,000 to be earmarked just for recreation. And while the budget was approved in Trenton, the governor held back a substantial size amount, called discretionary. And he has since released half of that money. Bellev was not in the release. So of course, I took the opportunity during the active shooter drill to text back the governor and ask him, "Thank you. How about our $150,000?" He replied back, looping in his chief of staff, and I should have an update tomorrow on that. But we were just with our legislative team at the high school handing out turkeys. I brought it up to them and they said that it's just a matter of time that the rest of that money will be released. That's earmarked just for recreation. So our playgrounds that need some help, our equipment that needs some help, it's $150,000 that we would not expect that it's going just for that. Past stuff, had a meeting with, in the manager's office with Remington Bark. They're the engineers that we hired about six, eight months ago to look at the reservoir. We do have some good news coming out on that. We haven't inked a deal with NORC just yet, but NORC has given us the green light to start a, we're calling it a memorandum of understanding between the two towns. And they have given every indication that they are on board with giving us in some way, shape, or form the reservoir properly, whether it's a lease, whether it's a purchase, whether it's a tax forgiveness, something. They, they're in agreement with that and we're going forward on that. I've had multiple meetings and onsite visits at the high school with regard to the tree lighting. That's going to take place on Friday, December 6th. Because some of the construction up there and some of the new areas might have to move things around a bit, but bear with us. Santa will be here on Friday, December 6th. Santa will also be sticking around for Saturday, December 7th at 1:00 at the firehouse on Franklin Avenue. While we have one more meeting coming up on December 10th, can we confirm that the second meeting on the 24th is definitely canceled? We do not have a meeting on 24th, right? We do not. So we have one more meeting left in the year. That is on Tuesday, the 10th. And lastly, for upcoming events, on December 12th at 6:30, we have Santa and a BPL express train coming to the library. So three opportunities to Santa, the 6th, the 7th, and the 12th. Anthony gave us an update on the SS County money. That's low-interest loans that we can use for lead line replacements. We haven't made a policy decision yet, but correct me if I'm wrong, Anthony, we are under a federal requirement to replace at least 700 lines.
700.
So as, my concept is this, as we do roads next year, we do roads in the oldest part of town that have a higher probability of having lead lines. And while the road is up, Mr. Frank Antoni will like this, we replace the underlying infrastructure while the road is dug up. I do not want to go digging up Rutan Road or Bernice Road that we just paved. Different story, they don't have lead lines, but you get my point. I think as we get, if we spend the $722,000 to DOT, let's pick older streets, that older infrastructure, let's do the infrastructure there. We're under an obligation to do 700 lines. How do we pay for 700 lines? The county's offering us this very low-interest loan to do that, which is something that we're, we're going to be very happy about. Anthony updated us on that. We're having our bond counsel come in. Also, Anthony, keep in mind the Federal Infrastructure Bank, because that's free money, I'm told. So I know the town attorney said that he has to be involved with that. So let's just make sure we stay on top of that. Anthony updated us on the Washington Avenue Maintenance Policy. I'm going to give you one more, Ant. Just an hour ago, you and I were on Washington Avenue. It gets dark early now. We counted at one intersection, five lights that were out. So let's get an inventory. Ant, if you can get DPW or police or somebody that's working after 4:00 or something, to give us an inventory on that, that'd be great. My last two questions were, street sweeper gone and free meters. Do you answer those? As of December, alternate side of street cleaning is, alternate side, street parking is suspended, and we will have free meters for the holiday. That's it for me. Communications?
None at this time, Mayor.
We're moving. Orders is.
None at this time, Mayor.
None. Wow, we are.
You had a motion over the public.
Second. I'm sorry, I did hear a motion over public comments at the second. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Dotari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumlow-Burk.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes. Do we have public comments? In the spirit of Thanksgiving, everybody's going to be nice and happy today.
Yes.
Mr. Frank Antoni, you're taking this first.
I first want to thank Marie for bringing all those pies to the scene on Friday. They really appreciated it. It was really nice and it was something a little different. So, thank you.
We're all in the spirit of Thanksgiving today.
I just want to ask, I passed DPW today and I saw that dirt. Was that dirt tested and clear? It's clean?
Yes.
We got a $150,000 grant, you said, for.
Recreation.
Recreation, okay.
We didn't get it yet, it's promised.
Well, we do, but I have a suggestion. About maybe two years ago, and I think Mr. Cosarelli and Mr. Robel and probably Marie would remember, and John, a woman came here and asked for a handicap or special needs playground, because there's a lot of children in Bellev that can't go to a playground and play. And they were talking about where you want to put the food trucks at the pistol range. Why can't we take some of that dirt that's clean and fill in the pistol range and do something there for the handicapped kids that they're able to go and enjoy a playground? And you still can plant all the beautiful flowers around it or whatever. And I think that would be something really nice for the community and you would get a big boost for that, which would be nice. See?
Ant, do that. No, it is something, you know what, and I've talked with, with the Franco family that was very interested in this, and they wound up going to Bluefield and doing their own part for the, at least was for activities for.
Yeah, I saw that on Bluefield, because it's near my son's house. But it would be nice if we had something like that in Bellev for a lot of the kids that.
Our parks need some attention and, and somewhere it should be done.
Well, we do have one, Mayor, through the chair. We do have the one in Branch Brook Park. That's handicap accessible. So, and that was last year, the county did it.
Yeah, but it's not, there's some of them in there, but it's not.
Not all of it, I know.
Not as much as the other parks are.
We can, we want to reduce the parks, so we think that hopefully may that work.
And I want to show everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Okay, Mr. Frank Antoni.
Well, I'll say happy Thanksgiving first, so you don't cut me off. We're going to address some things, but Mr. Martino's not here, so I'll save it for the next meeting. But in regards to the cleanup on Washington Avenue, the, we have signs up there, my tenants and people on Washington, you can't park early in the morning, Monday night, because the sweeper's supposed to clean from 6:00 a.m. They don't do it. They didn't do it this week. And many times, and the previous town manager, I called the department, 9:30, 10:00, when everybody's parked again, here comes a sweeper. She's driving that long side of the car. So even though we're suspending street clean, why don't we continue it all year in Washington Avenue?
The sweeper? So I can, let me just clarify, Mr. Antoni. The signs you see are alternate side parking, have nothing to do with street sweeping. Obviously, we all know that it's for street sweeping. That's number one. Number two, we don't sweep in the winter, because if it freezes and it gets slippery, it's icy condition. So that's traditionally why most towns don't. And I'll end with this. I've been in the manager's office this week and he had the police department in. And it looks like for spring, when we resume, we're going to attempt a pilot program that says that as far as issuing tickets and summonses, a police car is going to follow the sweeper, issue summonses then. And after the street sweeper goes, you would be allowed to park even though it's still within that time range. That's something we're going to attempt to try.
We're allowed to park now.
No, you're not.
Oh, you mean the time.
The time, right. We think that'd be a big benefit for people.
You can sweep in the winter, you just don't have to spray the water. The sweeper, and many times, we've been doing it. You don't spray water, but you can run up the debris and all that. And every week, once a week, we'll keep Washington Avenue clean. And as far as the, I thank you for not having overtime this charity.
Steve Martino.
I understand that we're not paying overtime for the Saturday crew.
That's correct.
Right. That's something we did 31 years ago, my department. I only hired one guy because I was thinking they elected to hire all my friends. But the person we did hire, his week was not Monday to Friday. His week was Tuesday to Saturday. So.
That's exactly what we just did, Mr. Antoni.
And we did not have any overtime. And we had.
So I commend you for that 31 years ago, and I commend him for doing that today.
So we could do more. And if I was going to hire the next person, work week was going to be Wednesday to Sunday. So we had somebody on without overtime or your mom. And I wish you'd do that. The, all these attorneys we're hiring.
We're not hiring attorneys. We're issuing. Those are the annual ones that we do every year for January. Don't believe everything you read online. Well, it doesn't say that we're hiring attorneys, the agenda.
Request for qualification.
Doesn't say we're hiring attorneys. Mr. Antoni, you know we do this every single year. We have to issue the RFPs, RFQs to get them ready for January 1st. It's absolutely nothing else than that. Look at the agenda a year ago, it's the same thing.
We have a lot of time employees. I hope we get some qualifications for labor contracts. I don't know, need them for labor contracts, and we have these good ones. Back in '87 or '88, we negotiated with the police and firemen without a labor attorney, not only hired one of the best labor attorneys in New Jersey, and they wind up paying a percentage more than we negotiated our contract with. So if we could sit down and negotiate properly, I think we could save that money there. And one more thing, Mr. Mayor Mellon. The, about three, four weeks ago, you posted on your site a picture of the ashtray on tree trucks, tree service trucks and all that. And you thanked Joe D. and the cabin free holders for coming in and trimming the trees in Bellev. That's not so. That very day, I stopped on Homeblower, everything they were doing there, at my friend's house, and I asked them. I knew, but I just heard them. I says, "Who are you working for?" "Oh, no, we're public service. We trim, clear the wires." Today, at 11:30 today, they were on King Street right off Bellev Avenue. Again, my wife and I went chop, I ran around the corner. "Did you guys work for the town?" She says, "No, we work for public service." So please be honest. You know, I know you like publicity and all that.
Well, I didn't take credit for it. I didn't say I was doing it.
You did say, you posted on your website, "Thank you, Joe D.."
Well, thank you, Joe D., not me.
Well, Joe D. didn't do it.
And Mr. Frank Antoni, the fact that you're bringing this up three weeks later and you have nothing else to talk about, I have no problem with that. Just to clarify, when I saw the trucks there, I called up the town hall. I said, "What's going on?" I was told by the police department, the county requested, "No parking signs because they're cutting trees on the county road." I should have delved a little deeper to get the specifics as to what contractor and exactly why. But at the end of the day, trees are getting trimmed on the county road and I thanked the county for it. I will stand corrected if it was PSMG trimming trees on a county road. But if this is the worst you got, Mr. Frank Antoni, I'll take.
And you do it all over the state to prevent the trees from knocking the wires down.
Next year, I will.
But if you want to do something and you want to get the county, my wife has called the county twice. "Go up Bellev Avenue, right where the golf course is. There's two trees that years ago, public service trimmed to clear their wires. But those two trees have these huge branches, eight to 12 inches in diameter, horizontally hanging over Bellev Avenue." She called the county, because a good ice storm or a good heavy rainstorm, they're going to fall and kill somebody. So she had asked them to cut them out, and I think it was almost two years she called twice it on. If you could use your rental there, get those trees.
I'll call Joe D.
Cut down because somebody's going to hurt.
I do need your help, Mr. Antoni.
Thank you, I'm happy.
Thank you. Have a Thanksgiving. Mr. Droes?
I just want to let you know about the, you mentioned about the sweeper. I go to Jersey City, Hoboken a lot, West New York, Union City. And I've gotten my sheriff tickets for street cleaning. But exactly what you said is what they do here.
They do a lot of places now.
And you know what? And it's very effective. And they, they do not park the people. Twice in the last couple of weeks, I had to go to Jersey City because of their street, street cleaning. I've got to drive around looking for parking spots. But it's good, and in Hoboken especially.
Especially that they paved, if they sweep the street, you should be allowed to park back.
And in Hoboken in particular, I noticed when I'm on Washington Street and the sweeper comes by, the people were actually sitting in their cars down the block following the sweep.
They get the first shot.
But no, but that's very good, because I noticed that in my.
Don't give me credit for it. I don't want the credit for it. This is part of the matter.
I'll give you the credit.
All right.
Just saying, it's a great idea. Finally, we're doing it.
Record that. Great idea.
No, I like that. I have to tell you that. Just a question here on the study commission for the Open Public Meetings Act. Who's going to be on that committee?
Nobody.
Nobody?
So if you were at the last meeting, which you were not.
I was here.
Well, we passed the resolution. We passed the resolution to send a request down to Trenton to do that.
Okay.
I'm not on it, nor am I appointing people to it. Just, that was your next question, I'm sure. Was that not your next question?
See, I'm not, I'm not too bad.
That was your next question, we know.
I just have a last question on this labor attorney. Now, the labor.
Labor council.
Council.
We're not hiring a specific person. It's just a qualified.
No, I know that, I know that. But what my question is, is it just for union contracts or is it just on an annual basis to review labor?
They would review all labor. So last year, I think we had two different firms that we utilized. One dealt with contract review negotiations, and the other one would deal with employee issues.
No, the reason I brought that up. No, the reason I brought that up because some years ago, we did that. We hired a labor attorney and we only used them for union contracts. And I was out of office for two years and I came back again and the guy was still there and I questioned him. I'm like, "What are you doing?"
Well, just because they're still there, they're not being paid. They're only qualified every year.
They were billing left and right. The billing was exhausted and that's the only reason I bring that up.
Our billing is way down in the law department. The only thing that's way up is we're still settling lawsuits from prior years. Six-figure lawsuits, by the way. But because of our labor council, like I said, we qualify multiple attorneys. We use one firm for labor negotiations, which I think we're done. We may have one more small union left, Ant.
I believe we're done.
We're done. So it really would only be that the town manager would go to them for any...
The reason I question that is because this one attorney was like really billing big, big numbers and I was like, "Time to get rid of him."
No, I welcome anybody. You guys like to Oprah stuff. Oprah or Attorney Bill, you can compare them to previous years. It doesn't happen anymore.
But anyway, have a good Thanksgiving.
You too.
Michelle?
Good evening. Michael Sheldon, just getting over the flu, so I apologize if my voice breaks several times. At the last council meeting, I asked if there was a tentative launch date for board docs. Do you have...
First meeting in February.
First in February. Thank you. Thank you. About a year ago, I had asked the council to consider trying to adopt the Bellville version of Shop West Orange. You were kind enough to pursue this. You brought in Finn Credit a few months ago so they could do a presentation. Has there been any more progress with, with this matter or is it on hold?
I'm not aware of any other progress now.
Are you still...
We explored that. We explored also creating a bid. I'm not quite sure. There's been any final, we haven't decided which direction we're going yet.
So it's still, it's still being considered at this point. I hope you do move forward because I, based on what I know about the program in West Orange, this would be such a win-win for everyone in Bellville. It's not only would help stimulate local businesses and help merchants, but in the process, it would help Bellville residents earn tax credits to be applied against the property tax bill. So I don't see any downside to this program, but I do, do hope it comes to fruition at some point. You mentioned earlier that next year, there's going to be some pilot initiatives in regards to street sweeping. Two or three years ago...
Pilot was the wrong choice of words, but yeah. I don't want everybody against it because we're calling it a pilot program.
You're not giving me wings.
Well, some, some modification to how the police deal with the parking enforcement. But two or three years ago, there was some serious discussion in this room about tweaking the start time for parking for street sweeping. Right now, it's 7:30 a.m. And there was some interest, some advocacy for moving that back to 8:00 or 8:30. It's a quality of life issue to make it a little easier for families, to get the kids off to school, not to worry about moving cars to a different street or the other side or getting... I just think that this would be something worthwhile to consider. That extra half hour, an hour would make a world of difference in the lives of many, many residents of Bellville. So if you're, if you're thinking about making other changes to how Bellville does the street sweeping, please give this idea some, some thought. Again, it was, it was seriously considered here, but two or three years ago, you know, with the change of guard...
We have, we have done it on a, on a street by street basis. I know some of the crossing guards made that request. The rest of the schools, the teachers parking that, we have changed them. We've changed them in certain business areas. I know Union Avenue by the Garros and some of the areas. We have done them on a per request basis, but we're going to, we're going to be meeting and discussing how it's going to be rolled out for the spring though.
So there are some streets with morning street sweeping that don't start that process until the...
I think by number, I want to say by number five school, I think we changed that.
Number nine and number four we changed.
Yeah, we changed a couple.
Actually made a little earlier to help the teachers.
And the kids.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Well, if it's working out well, then hopefully you consider maybe expanding it.
We can tweak street by street.
At the last council meeting, you brought in a company to discuss putting in new high-tech parking meters. That's a great idea. Fully supportive of that. Mr. Robel asked if there were dedicated IP addresses. Obviously, that would have to be the case because these are all wireless devices and you're going to be using credit cards in many instances for people to pay the parking meter, which raises another concern. Hopefully, Mr. Graziano and others being tech people have already asked this of the company. But these devices may be particularly vulnerable to skimming. Just as people, criminals put skimming devices on ATM devices to be able to record a credit card. With these devices now all over the township or all over Washington Avenue in particular, obviously you can't watch all of them all the time. And this would be a really great incentive for that criminal element to put skimming devices throughout Washington Avenue and elsewhere in Bellville. So I would ask, if you haven't asked the question already of the company, what do they do to, to prevent skimming? And finally, there was a little discussion earlier this evening about ransomware. Many of you know that Montclair, or Mont-Lincoln was hit last week. Bellville really has our school system as a great IT department. Nothing is perfect, but we really have all of our i's dotted and t's crossed. But it's my understanding, and I haven't had a good source information, that this building itself was a victim of ransomware a few years ago. But fortunately, Charlie Hood had already started doing offsite backups. And even though we basically lost the house here, Charlie was able to restore almost all your data without any major interruption. So there was a little discussion earlier about having seminars to make sure that everyone in the town hall is properly versed on the risks of phishing attacks, et cetera, and ransomware. But I think you guys have already, you don't have to confirm or deny this, but I think this building knows firsthand already the dangers of ransomware. So I hope you do move forward with some extra considerations and protocols to safeguard the town's data.
I do need to thank you. I do need your help.
All right. That's it. That's it for tonight. Thank you.
Through the chair. They, you know, back to what you were talking about right there. There's, there's a lot of things that we're trying to do now. A lot of things we're doing with the GIF and the coordination to make sure that the town is covered. One of, one of the problems and one of the things that was brought up down at the, at the league is you have to be very careful once something happens not to ruin the forensic evidence. Because this is the big problem. When, when you start doing backups, it's starting to wipe everything out. So now, and, and we have, by the way, we do have cyber insurance, but you know, we have to be very careful.
We do, we do have cyber insurance. I, I work for two of the largest GIFs in New Jersey, GSMGIF and PDGIF. My private company works for them. And if you fail, repeatedly fail a phishing test and all that, or, which is for us, you don't have adequate protection, they're not going to pay it out. They will not pay the big one. They won't do it anymore. And I don't blame them because these towns have been just very lackadaisical with security. Okay, we're going to close public. Go, you have one more.
Frank Fleischman at 33 Main Street. First of all, I wanted to say that I did see the videos today of the active shooter drill and very impressed with our police, our fire and our emergency departments as to how they, how they responded, that sort of thing. I work in higher education, so active shooter drills are done a lot on universities, that sort of thing. There's all kinds of training on that. It's unfortunate that we have to train for that sort of thing these days, but it's the world that we live in. I was also wondering, Mayor, if Councilman Burkesen had got her longstanding wish and will the light poles in Silver Lake be decorated for this holiday season?
Oh, manager, tell Mr. Fleischman what we talked about there.
So I have to call Public Works to find out what we have left as far as inventory.
Of course, they're going to go.
I'm sorry?
They're going to go.
Where? In the Silver Lake area.
Had the conversation today?
Without knowing how many, if, if we have any left from...
No, okay.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm looking at Bill's...
I don't think we have too much of the...
I'm looking at Bill's face and it doesn't look too promising.
We're going to try and rustle some out. But we are, the thoughts there.
Yes.
Thank you for still representing, thank you for still representing Silver Lake.
Of course. Thank you.
Jerry Doger Show a grown speak. All I want to do is wish everybody a good Thanksgiving, a good holiday and just be safe because you never know. If you have a driver you have to worry about, even if you're sober. So be very careful. The only question I have is the...
That was all you were going to do.
This is a simple, this is a simple question. The $750,000 grant you mentioned, the $150,000 grant, I assume that's what you mean.
Do you have a different thing?
They're two different things. What I'm saying is, are they going to be considered anticipated revenue for the 220 tax year?
The 150 is not because that, if we get it, they'll go in.
It's considered a chapter 159, so what happened, which what, chapter 159 sophisticated word for, after the budget's introduced and adopted, if you get a grant, insert it after the fact.
But it won't be for this year because this year's almost over.
No, no, not 19.
That's what I'm saying. It won't be for 220.
We'll get the 150 tomorrow. We might get the 150 tomorrow.
Oh, you might.
Unlikely, but we might get it.
Or a promise tomorrow, but you'd still have to get the check. That's why I said that.
Anybody else?
No one.
Motion.
Make a motion, close.
Motion made. It's a closed public comment. I think Clark called the roll.
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumlowberg.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes.
We're not, we're not a motion to consent or anything?
Yes. Yes, we're good. We have a motion to move the consent. Motion made in second. Here we go.
Yep.
We have a motion made in second to move the consent. For who?
Councilmember Cazarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumlowberg.
Yes.
Mayor Mellon.
Yes. New business.
There's a little, little, not new business, but just, I don't know if we're going to have a meeting before that.
Breaking our record.
We do have January 6th. I know you like to say Bellville's first. So Bellville Township's first Three Kings event. Oh, great. It's your birthday. I could be at the senior building at 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. That's it. And happy Thanksgiving.
We are going to have a meeting.
That's my birthday.
Can't let him do this, buddy. Just in case video doesn't come to the meeting.
We have a...
Motion to...
Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.
House members, colleagues, our guests here, happy Thanksgiving. All right. Motion to adjourn. All, Mayor?